Okay, good morning. Today is Monday, October 27th, 2018. And I'm calling for our county commissioner. Today we have Anthony Harris from St. John's Baptist Church. So if you please stand and may stand before these ladies.
Let us pray. Heavenly name eternal Father, Creator of all that is sinning and unsinning, Creator of the majestic mountains, the oceans, the valleys, the snow-capped mountains. We come before your presence today to say thank you for this opportunity to stand here and to call upon your name. Lord, as we do so, we come in this very hour to lift up the men and women of this court of Potter County. But we pray, Almighty God, that as they set to make decisions that affect the lives of their citizens, that they would do so with wisdom, that they would do so with knowledge, that they would do so, Lord, being mindful of the impact they have on all of our lives. So, Lord, I pray that you would give them a special wisdom, not only the judge and commissioners that sit here, but all the leaders of our county, from the sheriff to his deputies, Lord, to attorneys and all of those who make decisions that impact all of our lives. We pray, Lord, that you would allow them to do so with humility, humbleness, Lord, when it is all said and done, we will all be the better for them. We thank you now. We give you praise. We give you glory. Because Jesus takes a place.
Praise be to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, first thing on the agenda is a recognition of minutes from the October 8th, 2018, for meeting at the end of October 11th. We have a special county commissioner for the court. And to the vouchers to consider and act upon the equivalent of payment vouchers processed by the county attorney's office from the date of October 3rd through October 17th, 2018. Check numbers 1-826-92 through 1-82887, and wire transfer 1114 or 1146 in the amount of $770,673,966.
And would we approve the vouchers as presented?
Second. A motion and a second, all favorably. Number three, insurance report to recognize the insurance form report, Kay Holland. There's nothing unusual on the report, Kay. So recognize number four, retirement benefits, County Choice Silver to consider and act upon renewing the county's participation in County Choice Silver program, the county's retirement.
This is just the renewal for our Medicare supplement insurance that we offer retirees as they're leaving the county their direct bill from UHC. So we don't have any idea how many are actually on plan. We just offer it to employees as they're retiring. This year, we have some options. We currently anticipate in Plan F and have been for a good number of years. The premiums are actually going down on Plan F. You'll see on page four of your handout, there is a summary page that tells about the different plans. Plan F pays 100% of Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A and Part B deductibles. And that's the plan that we've been offering for a good number of years. There is a Plan F line that comes in at a little less premium, and it pays 100% of the Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A deductible and only 50% of the Part A deductible. Plan K pays 50% of Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A and Part B deductible, until the member reaches the maximum amount of content and then the plan pays 100%. This year, I have offered, at the bottom of that page, you'll see some package plans where we can offer a package. Those packages are more expensive and they do include prescription benefits, which we have not been including in our supplement plan we can offer for a good number of years. And that would cause by an increased deductible for any retirees that are currently on the plan. If we were to move plans, the retirees that are currently on the plan would be required to move to that newly chosen plan or move off to some other plan. And so because of that, my recommendation is to stay with Plan F and just keep the same plan that we've been offering for years.
And they'll idle enroll?
And enroll, idle enroll.
Kay, you said you don't have a real communication on how many are just paying.
No, we asked and they had this not main pay a county-specific, any kind of county-specific listing and they're billed directly from UHC from UnitedHealthcare. And so we don't even see that. We just give them information and then if we're giving contacts, we might not help care.
Now, all those plans are out there. The ones that we offer in comparative to the ones that you can get just independently instead. How does that match up with the other?
Well, our plan pays 100% of Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A and Part B deductibles, which I feel is a pretty good option of coverage for retirees. There are all different kinds of plans out there. You could get, you know, virtually any level of coverage, but you just all have different premiums.
Well, did the, I would agree with your recommendation for this year. And I feel like it's a good plan for the price point certainly and what it offers. Would it warrant some type of letter to those that are retired to say, as we look into next year, right? Do you use this plan? How's the priority? Any type of survey so that we have a gauge of whether it's working for them?
We could try to reach out to retirees and just say who is actually on the plan.
That's a lot of letters.
It's a lot of letters. Or maybe certainly. There's a lot of retirees over the scope of many years.
And UHC doesn't have anything? That seems odd.
We communicate with PAC. They have nothing.
So, but UnitedHealthcare probably.
Yeah, they do. But I don't know that they would have anything that would be county-specific. You know? Yeah.
Like a railroad, who knows if they live in Grand Park.
Or we have retirees that would have all of them.
Yes, right.
But we can certainly reach out.
I think it would be worth trying. Maybe an email or, of course, you want to have that.
So as a matter of gathering of all the truths and having an annual session or meeting, that could be, if we would be built there, that would sound like an annual, what was it? Not enrollment, but doing something during that timeframe. This is for all employees offered.
This is for all retirees.
I understand what I mean.
And when a retiree leaves the county, any retiree then goes out and shops supplements. And this Plan F that we offer is just one supplement in a number of supplements that they shop. And so it's just something that we operate as a courtesy to the county.
Typically with UnitedHealthcare, because I have done that, they usually have a group ID, some type of identifier that is specific to the county. So it might say PC for Potter County and the number. I think it's unusual that if they wouldn't know how many people are in our plan. That's pretty typical with UnitedHealthcare. They do that across the board for all the leaders. Not just. I make a motion that we approve the recommendation to continue with Plan F as recommended by HR director for the County Choice Silver retirement benefits with UnitedHealthcare.
Number five, treasurer's report to recognize the monthly treasurer's report and the boardroom president.
Good morning, Kay.
Good morning.
Okay, if you just, let's just start with the dashboard report on page three. The very latest interest rates and things have continued to increase. If you look down the left-hand corner, I just wanted to show you the increase in health. Things have continued to improve. This morning, our rate is 2.35 at A and B before October. So, and that changes every week. So at the end of the month, they'll average all of that out and I'll have a rate later. But as of this Monday, we're earning 2.35. Okay, then if you go to page six, just kind of give you a comparison as to where we were this time last year. Our fund balance is very stable and continues to grow. So as of September 30th, we had $24,220,639.01 compared to $21.4 million last year. And so you can see the only thing that decreased slightly was in our insurance fund. And again, on page seven, the graph shows you the rate of increase and the report there. And then the very last page is, I did a worksheet just to show you what we earned each month for our last fiscal year. And with our particular investment. And so our grand total of earnings, revenue for our interest rate for 2018 is $613,296.01 compared to 2017. We earned $343,825.71, which is approximately a 44% increase.
Okay, number six, train virtual energy audit to consider and make grant range to a preliminary energy study for our train commercial systems for Leland Dixon for county buildings. Leland, come on up. I talked to Leland, what, two years ago?
Yes, ma'am.
And then he came back this year to see if I was going to get on board or not. And then I had Mike come over from Perry and we talked about this. And he's going to do just a little long thought version of what we want to practice.
Judge Tanner, county commissioners, administration, public county systems. I am Leland Dixon. I'm with Train's Commercial Systems, which as the judge said, Train's part of Gearsaw Land, about 14 and a half billion dollar publicly traded company. I cover the energy sector for public entities in the state of Texas. I did a lot of work with Kefir 12, municipalities, a lot of work in the county area, higher ed, and public hospitals and private hospitals. Done these types of programs with great county about a three and a half billion dollar project, Judge Stowe. The same thing right now, finishing up the project with Judge Harlow out in Bowie County. So the far eastern area of the state of Texas. But I covered all of the state and working several other counties in the same process. What we're doing is following a state energy conservation office process model. Your local code requires us to do that and we work with any state entity. So this process is laid out by an energy conservation office. I think it's file nine, 303, in the local code. You guys can go check. We have done Train adds a process to this virtual study. We do that for our own benefit as well as the clients. It kind of helps us qualify the project upfront. And that virtual study utilizes some information from the website. Utility spend in this particular case, I grabbed utility spend from 2016 and 17, which was around $894 million. The virtual studies show that we could have a project that would yield energy savings alone. So just energy savings in white, water, and gas, between $162,000 and $233,000 a year, which extrapolates to an overall energy project where the energy savings would be guaranteed in $23,400,000. So the state sets these projects or sets this title or program up for public entities so that they can maintain and manage various deferred maintenance without any getting cash or budget. So that's what these projects are centered on. In this particular case, it dovetails very nicely into the strategic, Potter County strategic plan. There's a section in there about facilities. So it allows you to kind of repurpose cash you might have lost and to replenish some reasons or elevate some facilities or HVAC or other building. So the next step in the process is this preliminary study. It again is at no cost to the county. Everything is done on train time. The county has a copy of a letter received. It basically states that the county will allow us on-site with energy engineers to work with Mike's team, work with the county, work in building ops to come up with about a 90% model. And from there, the county can decide whether it wants to go further. And so that's what we have in front of the county today. Mike, did I miss anything? Just like her, a good morning. I want to lie for the court to understand the buildings that we're going to look at. One of them will be the county courthouse. We had our head court restoration, you know, and then at that time, we had to beat all the energy codes due to the preservation of the building. There's a lot of things that we did leave out in this building here. The law enforcement center, the vehicle maintenance garage out there, we just completed those, did beat all the energy codes that were set forth. We're still looking at those two buildings out there. Probably the biggest building we'll be looking at will be the Potter County Detention Center. Look at it. There's a lot of things out there that possibly the county could benefit from this. I wonder if we bring this back to the, to Judge Tanner and the commissioners' court. At that time, there'll be a lot of things to look at to really make sure you want to pursue involved in this remainder of this program. It's very similar to what we did with Texas Energy with their women, look at the electrical. Here, we're looking at every aspect of energy.
So when you say, you mentioned a virtual study. So you're probably, you said, looking at our website and probably looking at our vouchers would be my guess. Are our items in the box more expensive? I don't know where our data's coming from. I'm just trying to get my ideas around that.
It's a good question, Commissioner. So actually, every state entity has a post-utility development relationship. So I've only just added information from 2016 to 17, which was the last complete year. For 2018 through about May or July, without having a full year, it looked like electric and gas had gone up 4%, 5%. But that's where I'm getting, I'm not looking at any of your vouchers. I'm looking at specifically at that utility spend.
Can we have that online here? We can?
Thank you.
So you're looking at the spend and then you do an analysis to potentially bring back recommendations to help decrease that spend, right? To save taxpayer dollars is the goal at the end?
Correct. I mean, reducing that spend to help offset any capital required and improve the infrastructure.
Okay. What are some examples of that? What might that look like? And like, just another municipality example? Doesn't have to be related to county.
Certainly. So we'll be looking at lights. We'll be looking at anything that uses a KW of electricity or a DP or a gas. There'll be corrective measures. A lot of historic buildings, there are things that you have to follow to get through the historic commission that don't necessarily lend themselves to comfort in the building. So there'll be corrective measures that will work with Mike's team and the county when coming up with. Without going into a lot of technical detail, a lot of buildings run what we call constant volume. We turn them on and they just run. We'll be looking at things like efficiently setting that back, slowing things down, getting the air rid of these A and D humidification. So it'll be a whole list of corrective measures that'll have an approximate first cost and then the associated energy savings that will fall out of this preliminary study. The county can elect to go with any one. And again, it's a problem. It's a program that's really directed at helping counties and the municipalities and Kefir 12 and public sector businesses or entities manage deferred maintenance without any. Did I answer?
You did. You did. That's helpful. Thank you. Is there a county close by in the vicinity of Potter County that you worked with before?
Not here locally. Been a lot of efforts in west Texas. Like I said, if I'm going to call Judge Stowe or you can call Judge Harlow, we sell those. It may be, when we get into that particular phase.
What county is that? I'm sorry.
It's Bowie County. It would be, it's Texan County.
Okay.
In Boston. Longview is great county.
Okay. And then what about, what intrigues you to Potter County? I'm just interested to know how you made your way here.
Very good question. I've done a lot of work with the hospitals here. And met Judge Tanner a couple of years ago. And I've been a lot of work with northwest. And for several reasons, at corporate level, administration changed and we took a different path with them. We're back working with them now. And I did corporate level in county over the years.
So you're working with UHS corporate?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nice. Who's your contact down there? UHS, that's my background is UHS in northwest.
Oh, really? Vincent, that used to be, Ben. Worked with his team here locally. Perry, I'm not sure who's taken over the facilities administrative scenario with the facilities.
So what does your fee look like at the end? I'm just trying to get my mind around the line item. What that looks like at the end.
So the preliminary study again is at no cost. The, if you go into a detailed study, there is a fee for that. That gets rolled into the program, project. And it typically is based on square footage. There could be anywhere between one and maybe three percent of the project. Just depends. And another point, if you proceed that party to the program and everything, the county, the county would be responsible for the third-party review. We use them, a local engineer here to review all the documentation.
I make a motion that we approve agreeing to a preliminary energy study performed by Train, who's going to quickly, Commercial Studies through Leland Dixon for three identified county buildings, the county courthouse, the law enforcement center, and Potter County Detention Center.
The annual maintenance garage out there.
Vehicle maintenance. Four, four.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All favorably. Thank you, Leland.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Number seven, wireless connectivity. Do you hear a report on the condition of the wireless connectivity at Potter County Courthouse?
Morning.
What is the condition?
Seven, or I don't know. Yeah, like I said, we, as you all know, we've been working on trying to get the wireless connectivity better for everybody. Make everything the connection for everybody of the different departments that want to improve that connection. So what we've done, a couple of things. We've gone through most of the second floor now. It's connected differently. On the north side, what we did is the counter there is all wired up. So we have a switch in there. The switch in there, as you can see from the picture, we've got on top of it, the little white thing. That is one of the access points. We're using that as a bridge. So the bridge itself provides the switch with connectivity for the network. And then we ride in cable link from that switch to all the different PCs that are on the counter. What that did, that reduced, instead of everybody having their own little bridge for their phone, one for their PC, we took all those out and reduced it to one bridge. The bonus for this is that we can put these kind of wherever we need to. Put a switch wherever we need to use it. The downside to it is it isn't as, you're still on the wireless. You have to reduce the number of devices that are on the wireless. So on the south side, on Julie's side, what we did is we went through this another counter there, all the different desks and everything that were right there. So we were able to take and actually wire, there isn't, there's another counter, all this and everything that were. So we were able to take and actually wire, there isn't an actually wired, hardwired connection there. It used to be, I think, for the panelists, I think is what it was for. But we utilized that to plug the switch into. So from, in this connection, we didn't actually have to use a bridge. So we could hardwire it. It's a better connection. And initially, so this is not going to be how it's going to work. So in the end, this is all still testing it out, making sure.
It looks like you pressed on to this.
Yes, it does. So what we're going to try and do is kind of hide all that wiring and get it to look a lot, a lot better than what it does now. From what we've tested before we moved everybody off of the bridges that they were on, on this side, on the, on the south side in particular, they were testing like 2 meg download speeds, which is not great. On this solution here where they're plugged into the switch, it's actually almost 100. So it's quite a bit different. Talked with the people that were in Julie's area, Julie or so. It's a lot better. They haven't had any problems with phones. They're, you know, all their digital media, whatever they're doing, all the uploads, downloads, all that kind of stuff works a lot better for them. So that isn't the entirety of what we need to look at, though. It works great for them and that's good, but does it work better for everybody in the building, which is kind of what we need to figure out. So far, I think we've seen a slight improvement in what everybody else is getting as well, which is good. You can kind of see, like I say, the cable will just run up the side now. And that's not, again, it's not going to be. And along, probably being there's some objects that appear in the cable. But we're, we're going to go back through and clean all that up once we get it all.
How will it look when they're done?
We want it to be invisible, essentially. We want it to, the way on all those cables to be hidden. And we haven't quite decided exactly how we're going to do that yet. But that's the idea. We don't want them to be seen. And talking with Mike, the historic commission, that's one of the big things of the state of it. The historic commission is very concerned about how it looks. And so we want to do that as good as we can, hide it and.
Do we need any approval from the historical commission to start to hide it or what does that look like? What are?
We will.
Timeline? And you said on that board, don't you, Mike?
Yeah, what we'll have to do, I'm going to go through, as we get more departments on these different connections, increase that connectivity speed for everybody. We'll go through and work with Mike and see what we need to, what the best way of hiding that stuff is, what they'll approve. We're going to have to draw up some plans for, you know, here's, here's how we want to do it and then see if they'll approve that. So that's in the future. The next step, we're looking at more in the, on the second floor, on the north side, there's some, there's still some desks there that aren't connected up. So we're going to see what, if we can connect those up. We're looking at some different connection ways. Probably going to see about ordering. If you see the, the switches that we're using are, they're 48-foot switches. So we don't need near be that big. We are looking at ordering in some smaller switches that will still provide us with what we need, the connections and stuff that, you know, we can fill those out better. So we're using a great switch. But all that will, this is, again, this is just the testing part of it, see what we can do, how it's going to affect everybody if it's going to work or not. So I don't want to permanent anything until we're ready to order. Because it's the thing we're going for.
Left side of that picture looks like my house, the back of my TV. Have you cleared that?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to go through.
I can say something. I started on the advisory board with the Texas historic commission. Actually, what it is, there's a permit that needs to be filled out. Once all, you've got your plan together. Once all, you've got your plan together, just get your plan, fill out the permits, submit it. That's the main process right there. They're not gonna tell you, you can do something to your building, they want the building to be usable, but have a good plan.
So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're looking at maybe moving into the third floor, fifth floor, County Insurance around those floors. So that's, that's another big area.
Where do you think that's gonna happen?
We're hoping to do that right now, yeah. The guys have heard.
How long? Next two weeks, next?
Probably in the next month, we'll get some stuff together and actually start testing it and making sure it works. That's, that's a big part of it, is we put it in and give them a couple of weeks just to make sure that it works.
And Julie, all is well in your department?
Yeah, it's definitely a lot better. I mean, we can actually have phone calls. We, our phones are not, they're not dropping calls anymore either, so everything, it's kind of freed up some space.
Yeah. And that's what we're hoping that it would do, is that as we get a lot of the traffic off of it, it would free up, you know, made with for everybody else as well. So I think there's gonna come a point, a balance point where, you know, there's gonna be some people that are still on the wireless and I don't think it's feasible to move everybody off of it necessarily. If that's what we need to do, we will, but I think there will be a balance point where we have moved enough people off of that wireless and connected differently that everyone else is good, nobody else has issues. Phones especially, phones is the thing we see the most.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, Brandon and I, this is one of our topics on our monthly meeting and I thank you for putting the agenda item on, because I said probably as a court, the last thing that I, that I remember is the big packet we got with all of the email, so it was probably worth just an update, especially since naturally has been stable and would give us her opinion of how different that might be.
Well, my office is stable.
Ah, I always mean connectivity, not the.
Number eight, Potter County Memorial Stadium, recognize Potter County Stadium, if we must require about the discontract of Potter County San Jacinto.
So what I have placed on the agenda is just a contractual requirement that we have the San Jacinto, so on the second page of it, I just put a copy and paste from that original contract of their required improvements that they need to make. And so the way it reads is that they'll commit resources and labor and material and maintenance or improvement for the stadium in the average amount of seven thousand per contract year, October one through September thirtieth, no less than five thousand, no more than twelve thousand, five hundred required in any one year. So what we have in front of us is, I, I think what's nice about this contract is San Jacinto has a, a business analyst that keeps track of all of this. All of us have felt the pain of serving on different committees to say, what improvement? Was it documented? Is there a copy of the work that was done? So it was nice, it was very refreshing to say, yeah, we've got that, let me go ahead and send that your way. So this is what San Jacinto provided. Page two is roughly over a hundred thousand of improvements, which Judge gave the update on the last court. So this really is a follow-up just to the contract to recognize the improvements, so that we kind of do this annually, year by year, as that contract closes for that fiscal year.
Mike, you're feeling pretty comfortable with the statement?
Nicholas has been really involved with them out there throughout this year. One thing about San Jacinto, they have been investing with their head out there, they've done so much improvements and clean up to that state and they just made a big difference.
They really, yeah. We've done, we couldn't hire them to do their thing with the baseball teams.
Exactly.
We didn't do anything. All right, thank you. Number nine, Potter County Extension Office to recognize Potter County Extension Office Stadium as a recognition as the award recipient of the Agrolife program of human and family and community health, and to recognize Potter County Extension Office Stadium as a recognition and as a member of the Southern National Extension Association of Family and Community Health Services. Good morning.
Congratulations. Well, thank you. I, I didn't have a personal appreciation for how big of a deal this was. So as I was speaking with Elizabeth, and as we all know, her energy, it just exudes everywhere she goes. And so, Mercy, we have this award. Well, that sounds great. She said, no, let me tell you about the award. So I said, please, come to the court, we'd like to hear about it and recognize you, because this is a big deal for Potter County.
Well, thank you again. We appreciate your support and recognition, especially to allowing us to attend the state of national meetings. We were excited because it was in San Antonio this year. So there were over nine hundred family and community hall agents present, so we were excited. The food safety award recognized not just Potter County, but all of us in the Panhandle for the work that was being done up here in the Panhandle. We were excited about that. And of course, y'all know that everyone is at risk for foodborne illness. And so it was all of the creative work that we did in the Panhandle to educate families, youth, and food, retail food establishments as well on something as simple, we educate them on all areas of food safety, but people always forget that something as simple as just hand washing, and we forget about that, but that can help spread a lot of the foodborne illness back here, even things like the food that is food seasonable. And so I just wanted to share that with you, but I appreciate it. Thank you for continuing to believe in our work and the education that we provide for Potter County families. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
So Jennifer couldn't write it with you today?
No, she could not. She's Angela, the children.
Oh, okay.
She was part of the group, yes, thank you.
Okay. Number ten, local government corporation, you know, family.
This one will be fairly quick. We met last Wednesday, these days all together, these days, but a quick update. The MPEV, we get these reports from Jerry, their facilities director at the city. The MPEV is on schedule, they're working on the basement. So that was something he shared with LGC, if you're not seeing a lot of employees out there, they're underground, working on the basement structure. He also shared that some of the work with the team, there was a, a bridge that they were working on and they had the schematic design at twelve feet, and then they ended up moving it to fourteen feet to accommodate for some of the events that they're expecting to come here, for the trucks that have to unload. He also shared the sod that is being placed in the stadium is the same one as the Ranger Stadium, for what that's worth. I know for my Boston fan here, forget about it. But really just giving a highlight, the LGC will probably just meet once as we near the holidays for the end of the year. The majority of the meeting is typically just an update on where they are with the MPEV and whether it's on schedule, what that looks like. There's still, there continues to obviously be public comment about the retail at the bottom of the parking garage and, and one that will come, Mr. Garrett gave an update, Bob Garrett has that contract to lease out that space. He shared he couldn't share for confidentiality, who was looking at that, but there, that there are some that he expects to start coming. They also discussed parking, downtown parking, and three concepts that were shared with the city council, who I think is getting ready to make a, a final ordinance approval, but certainly I may not have all that detail correct. Valet parking is something that's being discussed, and then paid on street parking. So no surprise, Judge, I'm always thinking about our property and where that sits and what that looks like. So I think what may, and I shared this with Judge Tanner, what makes it different for us is our, our, our infrastructure is paid by the taxpayer. So the example I always give is, well, they, they built this house, right? So it's, it's difficult for us to then charge paid parking for their property, if you will. So anyway, for what that's worth, I wanted to share that that is coming, and that has been a topic of discussion for some time. It's coming. So that's my update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Number eleven, budget amendment to consider for approval, twin stores within the county of Potter County, as you would know, would result in a missing interest.
Good morning. The basic idea here, the record department leads is we're attempting to consolidate down into fewer positions that are being paid through supplements through our handling fund, the auto check fund or whatever. We're not changing the ultimate outline either direction. The idea here is to make it simpler for accounting, record keeping, and tracking purposes, so. But the court has requested that we come before the court with any transfer with respect to different positions, but we're not asking for any more money for.
More money. No one's getting a huge reward.
Really, we're trying to, no, we're trying to make it easier for Kerry to track the who's being paid at what point.
So, Scott, is this, I, I thought we vetted all of these changes during the budget process or something actually even started to occur before budget? Is this different? Or is this just a balancing of the line items? There are some positions that, I'm thinking of the hot check position, there are some positions that were moved around.
Yeah, yes. And, and I'm, I've slept since we did the budget report. But again, I will, I will admit that the spreadsheets you have in front of me, I did not prepare, Kerry did that for me. And so, and she, we, she's worked with our office, the idea again being to try and simplify it, make as much for their benefit as possible.
So you moved weight upstairs?
Right.
And there's some.
Right. And we're, we're hoping to get, we've applied for additional grant funding for our DV units because of the significant increase in workload that they have, where we've added another lawyer to help out in that division as well as assigned investigator specifically to do domestic violence, and we're hoping that the grant will pick up some of those and we'll come in court if we're successful and deal with that at appropriate time. But this makes it easier, when, when that kind of thing happens, this will make it easier for Kerry to deal with fallout if that happens.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the transfer to the county attorney's office.
I have a motion. Second, on the favor of the chairman.
Thank you.
Number twelve, equipment purchase, facilities maintenance to consider an active on purchase of the EXNW sprayer, sprayer from Prophet's Law and Leisure LLC, total of about seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, funds of budget. Who's gonna talk on this?
I don't know.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this is a, it's not a tractor, but it's a Ryall sprayer that makes fertilizer herbicide applications faster, more efficient. We've got two full-time guys that do all the downtown property landscaping and then one, perhaps one, which is the center. So this will help drastically instead of backpack sprayers. They didn't have a lawn force, they don't have backpack sprayers, it was, it was just so, and they were filling them up, spraying, filling them up, spraying. So this, we've added acreage, you know, so.
So this is a new piece of equipment? Okay. And what line item on the budget does it come out of?
Uh, landscaping part, I don't know what the neighbor is.
It's actually, it's a cat's over a pond, okay.
Yeah, it's a sprayer.
I don't know. My piece is fifty pounds, fifty gallons.
I'd be.
I bet it's probably fifty.
Fifty, probably.
And again, it's not one of the drivers, it's a standup that has kind of outrigger on it, so it'll be mobile enough to get, say, a little bit of space, but still large enough.
It's motorized, you just walk there.
You stand on it.
It's a stand. Doesn't need to lift the batteries.
Reminds me of a segue, we need to describe.
Segue.
Should I leave about, I have this segue. I mean, it's described. Okay.
We, we got multiple bits on this.
Okay.
Thank you. We didn't find one she wrote in Dallas, but by the time that they put the shipping on it, we hadn't put it forward, so.
There were, there were so many notes you had on it, you shouldn't have.
No, we just have this, this is all, just to buy it.
Ask you what it looks like.
Uh-uh.
I'm going to approve the purchase of the heat, any sprayer, sprayer from Prophet's Law and Leisure, those same total, that was, that was nine cents.
Sir.
I have a motion, and second, on the favor of the chairman. Five zero, thank you. Number thirteen, employment items to consider, an active on following employment items, so they spent this resignation, Diane Percy has custodian two, effective October eighth, and employment of, Nick, I can't say that.
Sharu Demisi.
That's what I was gonna say. Sharu Demisi, as custodian one, has been placed with Diane Percy, effective October fifteen. Didn't this person work for us before?
Sharu?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Northwest Hospital and.
His current, uh.
His current, his current employee, you're just moving buildings.
That's what I thought. I've seen his name before. Okay, here. Okay, okay.
Fit, understood.
Oh, it's okay. All right. So, I need a motion. Are you gonna do all of them together? Okay, road bridge discharge of Leslie Frehner, a summer mower, effective October eleven, the discharge of Marion Lopez, a summer mower, effective October eleven, and the discharge of Jean Gaston, a summer mower, October eleven. Agrolife Extension, the unemployment of Bonnie Cunningham, extension program assistant, has replaced her for one, and Cunningham.
No relation.
Effective October one twenty eighteen. Now.
Number thirteen, on the line of that.
Sir.
I have a motion, and second, on the favor of the chairman.
Judge Tanner?
Yes.
There's actually, Sharu was, the employment of Sharu, he's, he's promoting from a one to a two.
Oh.
To be promoted differently. He's taking, he is currently a one, he's moving to a two.
Diane Percy is physician, okay, okay. I like that. Okay, thank you. Potter County Projects, yeah, we've been to, no. Jury board, as usual, continuing problem. We have five hundred and ninety-one people in there right now, nine are four females, six of them are in Armstrong County, and nine are in Cholvers. Eighty-six percent are felled, eleven percent.
How many are, how's that?
Um, nine in Cholvers and six in.
As I'm talking to the ninety-four that we have.
It's a problem. We're gonna have to fix this at some point. Judge, would you repeat the percentage of the, no, sorry. Okay, too bad. Eighty-six percent felled, eleven percent. Okay, thank you. Anna, you sure it's on our three papers?
No, ma'am.
I said you have such, you have others for next time? Right, do the same.
Wow.
We've, we've been receiving those emails about the Pan, but are they gonna be done? It'll be a struggle.
Yeah, they said that this week, they're.
We don't know if we're about to add some product to it, make it work or not.
Some product to the cyber repair jail or something? Okay.
Not the end.
Right, no, we don't pay them.
So the old ones are off? All right, and the old ones off? The old ones off.
The old ones are off.
We don't have a way, yes. We don't have a say.
Yeah, I don't have a say. Okay. Our next meeting is, is it Monday? We pay lots of care, well, okay. Okay. We are, sir, and thank you.